And good evening and welcome to the City Council Meeting of the City of Lenore for Tuesday, September the 15th, 2020. We welcome you here this evening and as we normally do, in just a few minutes, we'll start with a moment of silence and we'll remain standing for our pledge of allegiance to our great country. And before we do that, we'll make sure that we continue in our thoughts and prayers all those who continue to work to keep us safe every day and we want to constantly keep them in our thoughts and prayers. Our police and fire and everyone, hospital, those that take care of us all the time during this COVID and we appreciate all that they're doing every day, hope they're staying out of harm's way and will continue to do so. So we want to keep those, all those people in our thoughts and prayers every day as we move forward through this pandemic and hopefully as we approach, of course, the end of this year, we might see some changes coming and we hope we will as soon as we can. So we will do that. Before we go into our moment of silence and pledge allegiance, I would like to go ahead and have a roll call of everyone who is with us this evening. And we'll start with those here on the council. Councilmember David Stevens is here, councilmember Ralph Presswood, Mayor Pro Tem Chrissy Thomas, myself, councilmember Ike Perkins, councilmember John Beal, City Manager Scott Hildebrand and our Police Chief Brent Phelps are here with us in the room. And I would now call those who are on the Zoom with us and I'll start with City Attorney TJ Rohr.
I'm here, thank you.
Yes, sir. Councilmembers who are away, traveling, councilmember Todd Perdue.
Yes, I'm here.
Councilmember Ben Willis.
I'm here too.
Yes, sir. Our Planning Director Ginny Wheelock.
I'm here.
Okay. Finance Director Donna Bean. Okay. Our City Clerk Shirley Cannon. Shirley's here, okay. Public Relations, Public Information Officer Joshua Harris.
I'm here.
Thank you. Our Police, our Fire Chief, Chief Hare, I think, is gone. I believe we got Chief Nelson that's with us tonight. Chief Nelson, are you here with us?
Yeah, he's here.
Thank you, sir. Economic Development downtown Main Street, Kaylin Horn. Is here, okay. Our Public Works Director Jared Wright.
Here.
Thank you, sir. Public Utilities Rafford Thomas.
Yes, I'm here.
Okay. And our Director of Recreation Kenny Storey.
I'm here.
Okay, great. I think we've covered everybody. We appreciate that. So if you will, please join us now and we'll rise for our moment of silence and remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. We salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First tonight on our agenda is a special recognition for Constitution Day and I'm going to come down and I will ask Diana Hale if she will join me in just a minute and maybe we could shoot a picture if we can get someone to do that. Maybe we'll let Chief Phelps, if he will, do that. And we thank you, Diana. Diana is with the Daughters of the American Revolution. We thank you for being here and for honoring this Constitution Week as it, we are always honored that, of course, September 17th, Constitution Day, coming up this Thursday and we always excited about that. Last year, we celebrated it on our new charters of freedom and we plan to do that again this year on the 13th, on the 17th at 12 o'clock. We won't have quite a big a crowd as we've had in the past, but we will plan to do that again. But we're always excited to do that. We're very honored that we all uphold our constitution here and swear allegiance to that as we are elected officials and this can, and not only our community, but across the state and the nation. So if we, well, I'm going to read the Constitution Week proclamation and present it to you. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rules by law. And whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention. And whereas five delegates were, were there in elected to represent North Carolina at the Constitutional Convention, William Blount, William Richardson-Davy, Alexander Martin, Richard Dobbs Spatt Senior, and Hugh Williamson, I hope I got those names right, in the state of North Carolina ratified the Constitution on November 21st, 1789, the 12th state to do so. And whereas it is fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which we'll commemorate it. And whereas, as Mayor of the City of Lenore, I encourage our residents to read the United States Constitution and discuss the meaning and importance of the document with our children and grandchildren. And whereas, public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September 17th through the 23rd of September as Constitution Week. Now therefore I, by virtue of the authority vested in me as Mayor of the City of Lenore in Caldwell County, do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through September 23rd, 2020, as Constitution Week and ask our citizens to reaffirm, reaffirm the ideals of the framers of the Constitution had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us through this guarding of our liberties. In witness whereof, I have heretofore set the hand and cause the seal of the City of Lenore, North Carolina to be affixed this the 15th day of September, the year of our Lord, 2020. I'd like to present that to you. We'll do our, and if we can, we'll let Chief shoot a picture. Put your mask on. Oh, yeah, thank you.
You don't want to get in trouble.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Anything you would like to, anything you'd like to say to the council? A couple minutes if you all do.
This is my second full year living here in North Carolina. I moved here two years ago because of my parents aging and needing to be here. And I didn't think I'd ever love any place as much as I loved where I lived in Oregon, but I dearly love Lenore. And I like the fact that it's kind of a big family here, just like we were in other places. And I've really enjoyed the support from the mayor, county councilman, and then I've spent several times over at the county schools. So it's really exciting that everybody's come on board to celebrate this. You know, we're not perfect, but together, when we work together, we can accomplish much. So, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. I forgot to wear my hat. I had my We the People hat and I forgot to put it on, so anyway.
You can wear it Thursday.
I'll wear it Thursday. Thank you for being with us.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we will move on then to, we do not have matters scheduled for public hearing this evening, so we'll move to our consent agenda items, which consist of minutes of the City Council Meeting of Tuesday, August 18th, 2020, as submitted, minutes of the committee, the whole meeting of Tuesday, August 25th, 2020, as submitted, and the proclamation we just presented for Constitution Day approving this proclamation proclaiming Thursday, September 17th as Constitution Day and the week of 17th through the 23rd throughout the City of Lenore and Caldwell County as Constitution Week. So I will present those to you.
I'd like to make a motion that items A, B, and C as presented in the consent agenda be approved.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stevens makes a motion to approve the consent agenda items A, B, and C as presented. No other discussion. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And on, on the, thank you, sir. Thank both of you guys. That stands approved unanimously. We appreciate that. Okay, we'll move on then to any requests and petitions of any citizens. And this evening, I think we have a gentleman that has come to, to visit with us. If you will, when you get to the podium, please give us your name and address and please keep it as brief as you possibly can because we do have other business to discuss tonight. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Dennis Benfield. Some of you may know me. I'm on the County Soil and Water Conservation District Board and have been for 14 years, so it's not a big surprise there.
What's your address, Mr. Benfield, just so we put it in the record? Your address?
My address, okay. 3455 Civil War Drive.
Okay.
Hudson.
Thank you, sir.
28638.
Okay.
Anyone in here go to UNC? Reason I mention it, there was a time when this was required reading. Because this is a North Carolina history book, Lefler and Newsome. It was written in Chapel Hill for Chapel Hill. So most of my facts and figures I got out of this book.
Okay.
Okay?
Yes, sir.
And I'll start if you're ready for me to.
Please go ahead.
At your last meeting, according to the news topic, you had speakers seeking to have you remove a monument uptown because it offends some people. I can't tell you how many times I've been offended by plumbers that came to my house. I'll let that one go. Anyway, first of all, African Americans in Lenore are often identified as a minority, quote unquote, yet they have celebrations and observances here that have ethnic connotations far beyond their representative numbers. There's Martin Luther King Day, Black History Month, and Kwanzaa, to name a few. And Dr. King's name is on the community center. No other ethnic group that I'm aware of is as well blessed. My forefathers, the Cherokee, were here for centuries before anyone even noticed them. So let me point out that virtually every county seat in the South has some sort of Confederate monument that offends someone. And my interest in the War of Northern Aggression goes back to one summer when I was trapped on my grandmother's farm after fourth grade. I was generally interested in history and later received a Civil War badge for my scout uniform. I earned my Eagle Scout Award plus a bachelor's degree in journalism, plus a master's degree in political science and public administration. And I've even taught classes for teacher renewal credit and given dozens of lectures to historical and genealogical groups. I'd like to think I'm not just another redneck with a Confederate battle flag on an old pickup I have not researched the Lenore Spire per se, but I have looked at it from the standpoint of history. Concerning my history, I found a great-great-grandfather who died at Gettysburg and a cousin who didn't. I also found where my great-great-grandmother applied twice for and received the state-sponsored pension for Confederate soldiers' dependents. So you need to look at the monument from several perspectives. My interest in Civil War history in the South is nothing special or unusual. Practically everyone who grew up in the South had at least one relative to fight for the gray and who likely died for it. Those people aren't necessarily uneducated bigots who can be dismissed so easily. That spire represents people with families in Caldwell County who fought and died for an idea, an idea they believed in. Only about one out of six Confederate soldiers from North Carolina was somehow connected to slavery. There was a lot of soldier material in western North Carolina who lived out the war in caves because they were so unionist. The state had fewer than 30,500 slaves than all and only Virginia, out of the original 13 states in the old Confederacy, had fewer. Out here this afternoon, I noticed nobody for over an hour stopped at that monument. Just thought I'd pass that along. Between the Confederate Spire and the Veterans Memorial on the other side of the street, though, is an over-mountain victory trail marker. That's those guys that came from as far as Tennessee to fight Talton at King's Mountain. And I just wonder if any of those people were slaveholders. We do know they beat the British at King's Mountain and that was enough. North Carolina's location in the upper South made it less dependent on King Cotton and less dependent on slavery, too. Between 1816 and 1830, though, the state established at least several manumission or anti-slavery societies. One group had 28 chapters and over 1,000 members. Another group had at least 40 branches and claimed that they had freed over 2,000 slaves in a three-year period. I wonder if last month's speakers knew that. Governor Zebulon Vance, North Carolina's Civil War Governor, was also connected to Caldwell County history. He represented hang-down-your-head Tom Dula, who was hanged for killing Laura Foster. And if you've ever been out to the Tony Jones Farm, her grave is right there on the upper end of it. Both trials were in 1866 and 68. It was Vance who built the state-owned blockade runner, the Advance, and got into squabbles over taxation of imported goods with Confederate President Jefferson Davis. When Davis suggested a 25% tax, Vance said, "I'll fire the ships first." Vance is also famously quoted, by the way, that was the Zeb Vance chapter of the United Daughters of the Confederacy who put it out there. Anyway, when he heard about President Lincoln's call for 75,000 volunteers to invade and blockade a sovereign North Carolina, Vance said that while he was arguing for the Union in the General Assembly, his raised arm fell sadly by the side of a secessionist, end quote, when he heard about President Lincoln's call. You think the speakers last month might have known that? Of course, Caldwell County also knuckled under General Stoneman's cavalry raid in several parts of the county, including Lenore. It was generally a raid across western North Carolina. The election of 1860 showed that the overwhelming majority of North Carolina's citizens were unionist and they voted that way in a convention to consider secession by over 700 votes. The state did later secede, even though North Carolina had been one of the original 13 colonies, signing both the Declaration of Independence and the Constitution. But it was a practical matter. The state would have been isolated by Virginia, Tennessee, and South Carolina otherwise. With all this unionist sentiment, why didn't North Carolinians fight? If not for slavery, what? The outbreak of hostilities in every state bordering North Carolina and Lincoln's call for troops to put down the insurrection, followed by his proclamation blockading southern ports, actually had the effect of unifying the state. When the only question was which side to fight on, unionists in every section of North Carolina became secessionist. The role of the black man in the war effort, both free and slave, has rarely been told. Slavery was wrong and I don't know of anybody in North Carolina who would try to defend it today. But a lot of blacks in the state generally did defend it. And some fought for her because the state was being invaded and they lived here, too. Contemporary newspaper accounts contain many stories of the loyalty of slaves to their masters. Some newspapers told stories of blacks being freed by Union soldiers by the score, only to run back to their farms or plantations where they lived.
I don't want to rush you, but we're kind of running out of time.
I've got one more paragraph.
Okay.
The main reason the monument to Confederate casualties in Lenore should be left alone is this. There were few, if any, slaves in Lenore or Caldwell County, so the form of government these men were fighting for hardly mattered to anybody locally. Instead, we've got many brave young white men from the Lenore area who risked the perils of war for their own individual independence. And although it didn't mean quite the same thing, the black man helped him out in so many ways. I urge you, for the majority of folks in this area, to leave the monument alone. You've had decades before this latest round of turmoil in the streets to remove a stone marker that supposedly has caused so much hate and discontent, especially to the city's black people. Meanwhile, it has stood over 110 years as a source of pride for citizens who know their family history and celebrate their ancestors, too. And I just say, I've got about 200 copies of this book, not copies, I'm sorry, 200 issues of the magazine going back to about, well, 35 years or so. An article this month is "Leave Statues Alone." I would also say, they've got these statues lined up on the hillside there at Gettysburg where the picket's charge led off. And they've got each state put a monument there where they were actually standing when they started off. North Carolina statue was right there in the corner of the page. You can't see it from up there, I'm sure, but it was sculpted by a guy named Gutz and Borgland, who did another little sculpture you may have heard of called Mount Rushmore. So, thank you so much for your attention.
Thank you. We appreciate it very much. Appreciate you being here. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we're still in the request and petition of any citizens. Chief, is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on then. We do not have any reports of boards and commissions this evening, so we'll move on to the report and recommendations of the City Manager, Mr. Hildebrand.
Mr. Mayor, Council, a couple items for information this evening. The Parks Recreation Advisory Board will meet on Monday, September 21st, 6:00 p.m. at Mulberry Recreation Center. The committee, the whole meeting for September, is not going to be held, it's canceled. The planning board will conduct a virtual meeting on Monday, September 28th, at 5:30 p.m. And the Foothills Regional Airport Authority will conduct a virtual meeting on Wednesday, September 30th, at noon. We have two items tonight for your consideration.
Need to lean into the mic a little bit. Can't hear.
Could you?
I will. They may want to cut the volume up in the control room.
Could you cut, they're cutting the volume up. Okay. Let us know if you can't hear.
The first item is change order number one. This is for Lower Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant, the Biosolids Project. The change order in your packet is valued at $23,607.96 and it includes six items, minor items. The contract price for that included a contingency of $192,000, so it's well within that contingency. And you see the report, Public Utility Director Rafford Thomas is on the call if he has specific questions, but otherwise we'd recommend approval. Actually, it's five revisions versus six, so.
What'd you say?
Five minor revisions versus, I said six, but it's five.
You've heard the recommendation of the, from the City Manager, from the staff, recommending approval of a change order number one in the amount of $23,607.96 for the Lower Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant improvements, and this was recommended by staff. Any discussion from anyone on the council? Any questions of Mr. Thomas, our Public Utilities Director? Hearing no one, then I'll ask for recommendation from the council.
Mayor, I make a motion that we approve item one as presented.
Okay, we have a motion, Councilmember Beal, to approve the change order number one for the Lower Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant Biosolids Project as presented. No other discussion. I will call for the question. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. That stands approved unanimously. Go ahead, Mr. Hildebrand.
The next item is an engineering service agreement, master agreement with McGill Associates. This task order number four is for $24,400. Have any of you been on the Greenway? I know several of you probably are out that way, but out by Days Inn, we've had a culvert failure, a 96-inch culvert there. We've worked on it for the last probably 12 to 18 years. We've worked on it for the last probably twelve to eighteen months, and it continues to sink. And so we need to go back and replace that culvert. So as such, we need to get an engineer involved to go back and design that and get it permitted. And so you have the recommendation from Public Works Director Jared Wright in the packet. I think the enclosure also includes some pictures of that area, so you know what we're talking about. If you have questions, I'll try to answer those, or Mr. Wright can as well. He's on the phone.
It's the same size culvert that's in there now?
It is ninety-six inches today, correct?
Correct. Thank you.
It's a big one.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation from the staff concerning the engineering services for McGill and Associates proposal and the extension, execution, excuse me, of task order number four for consultant services related to the replacement of the ninety-six-inch culvert and headwalls at two oh six Blonroth Boulevard for a total cost of twenty-four thousand, four hundred. Any discussion from anyone on the council here or on Zoom? Either one?
Mr. Mayor, I'm on the Greenway every day.
Okay.
So I'd like to recommend that we approve the engineering services and this is item number two.
You're the ones wearing all this stuff out.
Apparently. Maybe I need to lose it.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember Stevens to approve this recommendation for acceptance of the engineering services as presented for McGill and Associates. No other discussion, call for the questions. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Thank you. That carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Anything else, Mr. Hildebrand?
That's all I have.
Okay, appreciate that. Any recommendations or reports from our city attorney, Mr. Rohr?
No, we just have four matters for closed session.
Okay, thank you, sir. We will get to that in just a minute. We appreciate it. I do have a couple of board announcements I would like to present to you tonight for your consideration to be presented at our first meeting in October. That would be a, considering appointing Margaret Forney to serve a term on the Lenore Business Advisory Board, consider appointing Martha Lazo for an appointment to our Lenore Planning Board, and a reappointment for Dr. John Ty for reappointment to the ABC Board. I'll present those to you, and we will just bring them up again for hopefully a vote in, at our meeting in October, October the sixth, for the city council meeting. All of these have been very interesting. I think they'd be great members to our boards, and hopefully this catches us up for our boards at this time. I know we'll have some others that'll be coming up, but right now, this fills all our boards at this point in time if we do this. And I think that we have a great groups on these boards, great diversity on our boards, and that's what we've always tried to do, and I think that these will be great members to that. And Dr. Ty has already been on the ABC Board and has been a great member of that board. So I'll make this to you, and then we'll bring them up again at October sixth. So I just would present that to you. Any council members have anything that they'd like to report or talk about?
Speaking of the Greenway, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
As I say, my wife and I use it every day, and the numbers are phenomenal that are out there.
Yes.
I think during this period of the pandemic, folks are looking for an outlet, and they're using our Greenway, and that is a comment I hear over and over and over. Thank you for providing this Greenway to the citizens.
We do have, we do have a great system, and it's, appreciate all of our people, Public Works, Recreation, and everyone that takes care of it and keeps it up and makes sure everything is going great. Mr. Story, since we have you on the Zoom, I would ask you, have you had any, how is it looking at our parks? I know we begin to have a few things opened up there. Anything to report on those?
Things seem to be picking up. It was a little slow the first weekend, but today at Mulberry and Optimus Park, the parks and playgrounds were fairly full all day long, especially after about two o'clock today. But seems like things are starting to pick up outside a little bit since the playgrounds have been released and open, but things are going smoothly. We've had people at all of them, even at MLK. Shelters are being used, so people are moving around a little bit, but nothing overwhelming with large gatherings, so hopefully people will heed to that, fifty people, you know, outdoors. Also, Mr. Stevens talked about the Greenway, but as well, Brule Hill Walking Park is also being overwhelmed during this pandemic, so we are having a lot of users over there. Of course, things are going well all across our parks and Greenways.
Good. Good to hear. Glad that we're able to begin some of that. I think that kind of works the same as the, as the walking, or the Greenway. People can have a chance to use it. I hope they'll be safe and not have too many there at any particular time, but I think families that might want to use it, eat outside, enjoy the tables. I know our downtown square tables that we have are being used. I ate downtown today, and there were people at all the tables, and we're doing well, cleaning up, and then some others came after that, so it's working well. And I know we have some tables that are on the way, that we're waiting on, and should be here within the next few weeks, I think, with some new, our city logos and things on it. We'll be proud of that we'll keep using even after this pandemic changes. We would have those downtown to be, to continue to use. So those are, those are good things that we're trying to do during this really tough time that we're having. Anything else before we go into our closed session? We will be entering into this closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statutes one forty-three dash three eighteen point eleven, subsection A, subsection three. We enter into it to discuss attorney-client privilege, and I think, is it five items or four items that we will have? Five items that we will be discussing, but there'll be no decision or action coming out of that. Is that, is that true? Okay. All right, well, I need a motion then to go into closed session.
Make a motion to go into closed session.
Councilmember Perkins makes a motion to go into closed session. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'll give you guys a few minutes. I know you guys on Zoom will have to Zoom to a different Zoom, so we'll give you a few minutes to do that before we go into that. So we are in closed session here in just a minute.